Okay, and we've got nine o'clock. We're gonna call the December meeting 2020. Last regularly scheduled meeting of 2020 to order. And the first item on the agenda is the meeting minutes from November 12th, last month, so everybody can take a look at that and see if you have any changes or concerns.
I had gave Ray a couple, just minor things, so, but I've already gave them to her. It was just on the council appointments. It doesn't, I think we talked about mental health, the one that I was supposed to be on my question. So I had to add that.
Okay.
And then on the second, I think it was the second page under that CARES Act, it was just a typo. And that's about Mr. Murray, the opportunity to go, it should be to the state that stated. That was just a typo, but that was, that was the changes that I made, that I had to make.
Okay.
I'm making motion based on those changes.
Okay, motion by Matt, second. Second by Mike Myers, all those in favor. Motion carries, six zero. Okay, item number two, proposed runway 18 extension project, Davis County Airport. We have Eric Seber.
Morning.
Morning Eric.
Wanted to thank y'all for your time and just wanted to present a few things regarding the proposed runway 18 extension. And I know we've discussed this at length, multiple occasions. Um, we finally come to the conclusion that if we want to get this runway extension done, we're gonna have to do it ourselves. And I'll explain a little bit about the whole process and how things have, you know, come to be as of today. Um, I put a little presentation together. I did also give each one of you a handout. Um, these are some email conversations and a letter as well from local companies or companies that use the airport or would like to use the airport. I have more of those forthcoming, uh, they're just a little bit behind. Um, the first one, and I'll let you guys read through these. Um, but, um, the first one is from Clayton Paul's chief pilot at Purdue Farms, uh, talking about how the runway extension would benefit their operation and would allow them to use the airport with their current jet aircraft. Right now, they have to go to Lawrenceville and then bring their people over to Washington. Uh, the second one is from chief pilot at GPC Kent Grain, and about the, uh, the benefits to their operation. Not only, obviously, they come in here now, but not only would allow them to bring in, uh, their business partners, they could fly into this airport rather than going to another area. Now, I'll get into more detail about the specifics on the extension and why that makes sense. Also Chad Sears, chief pilot at Bex Hybrids. They're one as well, where their aircraft is too fast. The performance specs don't allow it to come in right now, so they would be able to use this airport rather than going to another local. They do bring their helicopter in, but, uh, their, their jet is not able per their ops, uh, operations specs. Uh, so we got the presentation. You just wanna jump back through. We've talked about our capital improvement plan or program that we put together. Um, this is a five-year plan, what we plan with, uh, the FAA and NDOT Department of Aviation. This program's out for the next five years. We update this yearly in January. In fact, our board, the airport board and the aviation commissioners tomorrow will approve the five-year plan, starting in January, the new updated plan, at our board meeting tomorrow. So this plan outlines requested project objectives, justifications, and estimated costs for each of the next six years, including this year, uh, for using known available federal funding. So what we've done in the past is we've planned this runway extension using federal dollars for the last 20 years, 15 years, 20 years. I've, I've seen newspaper articles back to 2008, talking about the runway extension. The existing plan that we have that sits as of today, um, shows in 2021 that we would be extending the runway 18 and the taxiway to extend with it. That would be the design work, and then also a vertically guided aeronautical survey. That and what that entails is a new survey that gives us, uh, GPS-based navigation approaches to both ends of the runway. That is still included in our new plan, but we just changed everything up here. Uh, the actual construction was slated to take place in 2022. Extending the parallel taxiway to meet the new extension was 2023. Our rollover funds, the funds, actual money that we don't get, but it's money that could be used towards these project. Projects would roll over in 2024 and then we would, uh, they would reimburse us for the land acquisition for that taxiway extension. So that's the plan as of today. The new plan going forward assumes that we will extend the runway, uh, using our own funds. In 2021, we are asking, and we have submitted grant pre-applications to the FAA for these two items in 2021 already, a new vertically guided survey, uh, reconstructing hangar taxiways. And if you remember back to the, when we talked about budgets in September, our budget, we had planned for 2021 that we would do those, uh, hangar taxiways ourselves to free up space to let the FAA do, help grant fund the runway extension. Well, now that we found out that the FAA is not willing to accept our old forecasted data to justify the project, um, we're not going.
That's the whole goal here, Eric, right, is because, you know, they wanted to do another traffic study. They wanted to do all that stuff that was gonna push us back several years. We have the funds, the airport has the funds to be able to construct that, get ahead and push everything out.
Yeah, it'll push everything much, much sooner.
Yep.
At really less cost than what the overall grant-funded project would be per the FAA specs. But we still have to get FAA approval, but, um, the forecast and all of this work costs money and would cost us $30,000, $40,000 to generate a new forecast. And this forecast assumes, or you must meet 250 aircraft critical operations per year to, for the justification, uh, to be accepted. Well, in Co- in the COVID world, we're not going to have that. And in fact, our engineering firms said they would not give us a, they would not go through the process of doing a forecast for us, because they knew it would be accepted. So that's where we've finally made the decision, okay, we need to go along to the. Though, um, the only thing, this is a photo that shows the county road extension or the relocation. Don't worry about that. We've closed the county road, um, with the help of Phil and his team and the county commissioners. So that saves a tremendous amount of work and, you know, dollars. And then the parallel taxiway extension, you see the white area and the little white area of the, uh, of the actual runway. For this project, we don't need any land acquisition. We don't need easements unless the FAA tells us we need easements for runway safety area. We're, we've got a meeting with them, hopefully next week. Um, we have the, the, that lighter colored land patch off the end of the runway is already airport property. It's eight acres, which will, which will meet the safety requirements for the runway end protection zone, the overrun area. So all we're looking to do is extend 201 feet of pavement off the end of the runway. Obviously, new markings, new, uh, new runway end lighting. We would just basically remove and relocate our, the lighting that we already have. And then, uh, go and jump into scope and cost. So the way it's planned right now, vertically guided survey for runway approaches, this number in here of 84,000, uh, eight, this, and these are engineers' estimates. These had, projects have not been bid yet. So engineers' estimates of 84,000 to do that new survey. A pretty detailed, um, complex project for them to do in, in, you know, concert with the FAA. Uh, that we have submitted a grant pre-application for. So in the end totals, these numbers will be slightly different and I'll explain that, but the actual cost that we are anticipating for the runway extension, the cost that we may incur to the second bold line item for extending 1836 to the north 201 feet. Uh, the design work is estimated at 120,000. Uh, this is the, of course, the actual construction and the big, big section. And it's hard to see. Um, basically, the big number is 490,000 to do all of that work. And then the next box below that, utility relocation, any crop damage or crop loss from that during that timeframe, and all the other engineering, construction management, construction inspection, 70,000. So the easy numbers to read here. A design total of 120, construction total of 560. Possible survey total, 10,000. Our estimated project total is $690,000. As of today, or as of, uh, yesterday, I believe, or Monday, I checked with Patty's office and Helen, we have 911,820, 911, $825,000 in our aviation fund, 1107. The airport generates organic revenue plus, uh, if you, if you include the property tax, excise tax revenue, approximately $300,000 a year. Um, I anticipate going forward, our budgets here on out would be fairly revenue neutral. So that gives us, if we take 690 or 700,000 out, we've got a 200,000-plus-dollar rainy day fund um, in our account. And we could do, you know, of course, 690 is, we don't know that the, go ahead.
Your gross in 300, that's gross.
That's, that's gross, yes.
What are you netting?
Well, net, if you take out fuel sales, the biggest portion of that is, is fuel sales and I'd have to get you the specific numbers.
Just bottom line, everything you have, everything you take in, everything you spend, what's?
It's, well, the two last, the last two years are, are skewed because we've had so many expenses because of all the, the maintenance work that we've had to do. So it's, it's, I can't give you a good number for the last two years since I've been around, because we've had to, we've been playing catch-up the whole time. So.
You, but you at least break even. You're not gonna.
Yeah, correct. I anticipate.
You're not gonna be eating into the 221,000 if you got left.
After 2021, no, I don't, do not anticipate that at all. Um, and previously, we were, we were, the reason this money was able to be built up was really, there were several things that were just, we kind of went even keel. Uh, we have increased revenue over the last three years, with the exception of, uh, this year, of course. We're about even with the CARES Act funding. So I anticipate that we, once we get out of the, the COVID times and business travel picks back up, hopefully mid to late next year, that we would be back on par with, um, with our normal amount of, you know, fuel sales and revenue. So I don't have a good answer for you. I can, I can tell you, based on everything that I've looked at, I expect that we will be revenue neutral after 2021.
Tony, um, in regards to, one thing that he's mentioning is, as a council, when we go through the budget process and we, um, work with the calculations for the levy and that distribution, so his is in that, um, calculations. And so we've protected his levy in the past several years to maintain that revenue. So that's something that the council will oversee and you'll be informed and guided on that, along with Eric with his budget, so.
Originally, the estimated cost for the project, when we were looking at getting FAA grant funding with the land acquisition, the, um, with the easements that would be required, and also with the taxiway extension, was approximately 1.7 million to do this project. So we've taken out all the extra stuff that we don't need. And just absolutely what we do need is the 201 feet of pavement that will allow current businesses and other, uh, future business to utilize the runway here. Timeline, this is the timeline that was given to me by our engineering. We can move these dates a little bit sooner. Um, I, I did not anticipate originally. This has not been shared with our board yet, has either, this is during our meeting tomorrow. I just received this a few days ago. They're looking at actual construction starting in October and I think that's a little bit late for our purposes. So we've got to go through with our engineering firm, see what timelines we can move up. And then we do have a, we are trying to schedule a meeting in the next week with the FAA and that, uh, meeting agenda, all these different items. We have to present to them, we still need their approval. For them to allow us to, we can put the pavement there, but they have to support it in the airspace network. And vertically guided surveys is part of that. And if we, we put, put in 201 feet of pavement and they don't recognize that, and they won't give us new approaches to the, to the runway, then this may not be as helpful as we think. So what we're asking for today is, uh, for a consent from the council to use our funding to do the runway extension locally. Once we get to the process of actually signing contracts and, and presenting bids, advertising bids, then, um, we'll look at moving, actually moving funds around, but we don't need to change anything as of today, as far as where the funds sit. So, uh, just a couple little, I did, the handout is there. Um, here is a interesting, uh, this gives you a visual representation. Uh, Eagle Rail Car Service currently has a Citation CJ3 jet, um, that they fly out of Fort Worth up here regularly. They're looking at a newer aircraft, a faster, more capable aircraft. So I've been working with, with their chief pilot over the past few weeks on a couple different options that they're looking at as far as what, what aircraft will get in and out of here safely, plus meet all the other requirements for the other places that they go. Um, this gives you an idea with our 4,615-foot runway length right now, that's actual published length, um, with a grooved surface on a dry day, they can take out four passengers, standard day temperature, and they can go approximately, you can see that whole yellow line, they're 1,500-plus nautical mile range. Where we get limited is on a wet, wet conditions, contaminated surface, runway surface, they have a 300 nautical mile range. So if it's raining, they can't even come in here with our current runway length. And that's with a Lear 75 aircraft from Bombardier. And then, uh, and, and on, and Matt will understand this, on an IFR day or when the cloud deck is really low, they're not even allowed to come in or go out on those days. So they're very limited on their operations. And that's pretty standard with a lot of the other operators and the larger, faster jet aircraft. So I did include the handout from Purdue, Kent Grain, and Bex, and I'll have more of those as, as the days go along. I'm expecting a few more back. Um, any, I'm happy to get you any other information that you may want after as well.
Well, I appreciate the information. You've done your due diligence and put together some good numbers and, uh, I think we, I would make a motion that we, uh, accept this proposal and let him proceed.
I would second that. It sounds like a good project. You've been waiting a while to get this done out there, I know. Can't wait forever.
Been a long time coming.
Yeah, I, the day I'm winding up 20 years being on this council. And it seems like from the beginning, along with this annex project, that's two things I can remember from back then. Bob Baron. On your board and, and Bob kept me up with what was going on out there. And this has been the goal of the airport and the airport board to, uh, get that, uh, runway extended to 5,001 feet. And, uh, I would echo the sentiments of Dave and Mike that, uh, you've got the money sitting there and let's, let's get her done. It needs to be done and, and let's move on.
Yeah. If we can get this building built, we can surely add a couple hundred feet to the runway.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, we're, we're in the, in the good position that we have funds set aside and we're not bound by county roads in the way now. Um, unlike what Huntingburg is dealing with right now, um, their 500-foot runway extension is, is over $13 million with a, a 20-foot-high tunnel involved. And so we, we are in a better location geographically, you know, as far as the topographically, as far as the land is concerned, so.
Pretty, pretty cool driving under that tunnel and not running.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a pretty amazing.
13 million, it ought to be.
Setups they have.
It is pretty slick.
And they use it. They will use the extension there. Um, it will benefit their operations as well.
So let me ask you this, with 5,001 feet, what limitations will you have then as far as bigger aircraft coming in?
Well, I can tell you, based on other local airports, um, even Huntingburg is one, they're, they are at 5,001 right now. They will be going to 5,500. Um, they have had 737s as a size range land there before. They can't do it fully loaded, obviously. Would not be something that we would expect here. 5,000 and, oh, greater than 5,000 feet for the majority of the charter operations, for the majority of the independent businesses that run their own aircraft. That's the magic number per either their insurance requirements or their operations specs. So they've got a manual that states you can only go into airports at 5,000 or greater. So when a business is looking in the area to come in, maybe they need to do business in Davies County. They've got a, there's so much technology now, different companies that offer services. Aircraft Performance Group is one of them that some of our operators use. That is tailored to their operation, their aircraft. And they need to go to XYZ location. They plug that in and it gives them all the airports that they're allowed to go into. Right now, most of those operators, when they plug that information in, Davies County doesn't even pop up because we don't meet the minimum requirements. So it's, it's, I, I, we know of all, several companies that will benefit by the extension. But you, you could jump in, you know, larger jet size drastically. Corporate jet size, I should say.
So bas- basically, the corporate aircraft will all be able to come in on a 5,001. No commercial aircraft.
Where, where, you could still have charter or, and/or commercial smaller, you know, smaller jets and/or turboprop aircraft. But the main, main concern is 5,001 is probably good for 90, 95% of the, the companies that would come into this area. We don't need another 500 feet beyond that, based on our current situation today. Plus, if we ever need to go further, we're, we're a little bit landlocked with the Thousand Acre Woods to the north and the Boyd Grain System to the south of us. So that may be a challenge for many years from now and may not even ever get there. But 5,001 meets the minimum requirements and that will do the, at the most bang for the dollars that we.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Eric, thank you for your detailed presentation on it.
You're welcome.
It's been a goal, you know, for, for a lot of people, a lot of years. So thank you.
Happy to, are there any other questions later, if you have any, or reach out at any time?
Well, do you want to entertain a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, I missed the.
He's second.
Mike's second.
I'm sorry.
It's when he's taking your nap.
Yeah, sorry about that. So we had a motion by Dave, second by Mike Myers, all those in favor proceeding with, that Eric proceed with his operations. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, and I'll keep you updated on, uh, what we hear from our meeting, uh, in the next few weeks with the FAA. That will be the next hurdle.
Okay, thank you.
Can I interject with old business as far as just making sure that all these people are?
Okay, all right. A little bit of old business, interjecting here on the reappointments for several of the, the boards that are, um, appointed by the council. Uh, they've all been verified and I'll just go down through the list. I went back through last month's minutes and, um, I'm not sure it included everything, um, that maybe we had verified. Pro, most of them, but we just, I just want to make sure it's in the minutes, that all the names, all the commissions that, uh, have been appointed. So the Alcoholic Beverage Commission of Natalie Smith, the APC Phil Jolliffe, Bennington Levy Board, Mike Sprinkle, Davis County Economic Development, Dave Smith, Davis County Park Board, Mark Trailer, Park Board, Wes Boggs, Mark Trailer, the PTA BOA, Jerry Harpstrick, the Redevelopment Commission, Mike Healy, Matt Meredith, uh, that one. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, also Redevelopment Commission and Pam Bartlett, sorry. And the mental, Regional Mental Health Advisory, Joanne, did you ever find anything on that or?
Patty had checked and yes, they, they do still have county reference and patients, so, yeah.
Still good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, very good, thank you. Joey McCracken, the S I D C, Mike Sprinkle, the Washington Economic Development Commission, Tom Richardson. So those were all contacted and have all agreed to serve, uh, another term. Okay, now, item number three, Resolution 2020-8, Bennington Levy. I can go back a second. Patty, do we need a motion on that, on those appointments?
Oh.
Did we, did we make that last month or not?
I think we did, but we can.
I didn't know, I couldn't remember. I, I, I didn't read the minutes as closely, Joanne. Now, some of them weren't contacted, so yeah, it'd probably be best, let's, let's go ahead and all entertain a motion, make those, approve those appointments.
I'll make those motions, approve the appointments, as Red.
Okay, Michael, or, uh, motion by Mike Myers.
Second.
Second by Tony Duncan, all those in favor? All right. Motion carries, six zero. Thank you. Sorry about that. Number three, Resolution 2020-8, Bennington Levy. Grant?
Yep.
Grant, would you go?
Um, you all should have had that in your packet. It's something that we've talked about before. Um, the Bennington Levy has presented to you relative to their request for up to $200,000, um, deal with a pump station. Um, had some communication with, with Mike about that as well. I didn't know if that, in fact, that you wanted to, to give or talk about it at all.
Uh, very briefly. It's, uh, kind of old news, but we've had electrical problems for years down there and we wind up, most of the time, having to bring a generator down there when the rivers are out to, to pump with. And, uh, it was, uh, decided by the levy committee with it, we were gonna pursue putting some new underground water in and change the transformer. I guess our transformers were some odd duck that maybe was made in the 1800s. I don't really know, but we had to send them to North Dakota to get them rebuilt. And it seems like every time we get a lightning storm, it'll blow one of them. So, uh, I mean, we've been running with generators more than we have electricity. So this is the needed upgrade that the Bennington Levy needs to get, uh, uh, consistent power source down there to run those pumps. So, uh, anyway, that's, uh, kind of the nuts and bolts of the whole thing, that this, uh, will alleviate, should alleviate our problem on having a good power supply down there to run those pumps.
Thanks. Yeah, Tom Graham, uh, has presented to this group and to the commissioners. I believe Steve Myers has also presented to this group and to the commissioners. Uh, you had in your packet joint resolution concerning the payment and reimbursement of the Bennington. had in your packet joint resolution concerning the payment and reimbursement of the Bennington Levy repairs and maintenance project. I can go through that real quick or if you want to shoot it, I don't know if you can. Whereas on September 22, 2020, and October 13, 2020, certain Bennington Levy committee members attended the Davies County Board of Commissioners meeting and presented on the need for certain repairs and/or maintenance, specifically a pump repair project for Smothers Creek, which they anticipate will cost up to $200,000. Whereas the county acknowledges a similar presentation by the Levy Committee on October 14th to the Davies County Council on the project. Whereas at those meetings and following the presentation, commissioners and council have agreed appropriate expenses presented to the county would be paid in accordance with the statute and that the Levy Committee will immediately assess the appropriate landowners and reimburse the county in accordance with the applicable statute. Whereas the minutes of all related meetings should be attached to this resolution and maintained as an official county record. Whereas the council and commissioners acknowledge certain mediated agreement dated June 4, 2013, where quote, "all future repair costs and expenses," close quote, "submitted to the county" would be apportioned and assessed by the Levy Committee on the appropriate landowners within 90 days of such expenses being submitted to the county. And quote, "any assessment, any such assessment shall appear on the next tax statement," close quote. Whereas the county acknowledges Indiana Code 1427-3-7 provides the parties with the applicable process for payment and reimbursement of appropriate repairs and maintenance. Now therefore be it resolved that the county understand and acknowledges as follows. Number one, the Levy Committee is proceeding with the public bidding of the project and the project is necessary to maintain the functionality of the levy and acceptable status of the levy with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The levy is currently in an acceptable status with the Corps. The Levy Committee does not have the funds on hand to pay the anticipated project expenses. On or after December 15th, 2020, the Levy Committee will present project bills to the county auditor for payment and such bills will collectively not exceed $200,000. Upon such, upon said bill submission, the Levy Committee will immediately assess its landowners for the purpose of reimbursing the county. For the project expenses, the Levy Committee has verbally agreed to reimburse the county not less than $35,000 per year with the initial payment to be made in 2021. In 60 days of the last date hereof, the county requests a reimbursement, a written reimbursement schedule authorized and approved by the Levy Committee. County wishes to work in good faith with the Levy Committee, provided however that any past, present, or future agreements with the Levy Committee should not be considered a waiver of the county's rights under any agreement or under the applicable statute, nor does it deprive the county of the right thereafter to insist upon strict adherence to any term of an agreement or the applicable statute. So, in some ways, this is a one-off, I, I would hope. It's a request that's extremely important to any committee. They have agreed to reimburse the county as quickly as they deem possible. So, this is presented to you for your consideration. It's gone before the Board of Commissioners. They have agreed to it. Again, this is a joint resolution, commissioners and council. That's all.
And, I don't, one of the things we talked about was when the payment was going to start and I stressed that I wanted it to start immediately and that it wouldn't be tacked on to the back end of the current assessment that we have going now. So, I think that's all set up for that, so.
So it's going to be paid and currently.
$5,000, $35,000 a year starting next year.
Additional.
Correct.
The one they're already paying.
Right.
Okay. That, that's. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to.
Make a motion.
Prove the resolution. Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Dave Smith. All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Motion carries five zero. I, Mike Sprinkle abstains. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number four, Davis Community Hospital Board of Governors' appointment. And this is, I'll explain this a little bit. There was a longstanding board member who has decided to retire, step off, and so the nominating committee has nominated myself to fulfill that position. And after the first of the year, the council will, will appoint someone from the council to fill that. So this has nothing to do with me as part of the council. Want to point that out. And is there any discussion or if you take a recess or anything of that nature, I can do that too?
I would make a motion to appoint Kent Norris to the Davis County Hospital Board of Governors effective, I guess, January 1st.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mike Myers, second by, who made the second? Mike Sprinkle. All those in favor? Motion carries, was it unanimous? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Number five, Town of Odin West Street Project. Have someone here.
Good morning. That's, that's myself and Doug Benjamin's joined me from.
Okay, Doug, how are you doing?
Can I get the screen there?
Get me.
Okay. As you all know, we've spent a lot of money on Canterbury Road the last 15 years and we have a bottleneck up in Odin currently. Have curbs that were added there in 2010 that may have made the road really narrow. We've also got a bottleneck at the intersection where Chuckles is located. Semis, large trucks can't make their turn going eastbound. We've talked several times to the businesses south, specifically Grabber Post and JJ's, about trying to limit their use of County Road 800 north going east to 231, specifically because of the geometry of the road. I'm talking about the hills. It creates a very unsafe situation for them to continue to utilize that roadway to go to and from 231. Reached out to them about a year ago and they said, "Well, if that was opened up in Odin, there will be no reason that we couldn't use that with our trucks." So, with that in mind, we started talking with the Town of Odin, as they do on the facility, through town, from Park Street down here on the south end, all the way up to, well, approximately the Denest office on the north side of town is where they actually quit. But for today, what we're talking about would, would be the federal call for projects that would be for a 2026 construction. We would like to partner with the town in order to upgrade the road from Park Street here on the south end, to Maple Street, just north of the highway. So that would be upgrading the, the roadway for that entire distance, adding sidewalk on the east side. What it would do, here's a Google street view right now as we come down from the, we're, we're heading northbound here. And as we come to Park Street, see what, what we have. Essentially, we have a bottleneck right here where we enter into town. If we proceed ahead north. All mill. Railroad tracks. The bank. Street. Fish hut. Finally coming to the intersection here. Where we have all the utility poles making it impossible for a semi to, to turn out of this lane and go east. Apartment complex over here. What we would propose is to come just through this intersection and stop here at Maple Street. So again, Odin, we reached out to them. They're interested in partnering with us. They would of course have to take the lead because the, the facility doesn't belong to them and they're willing to do that. Went to the commissioners yesterday to ask for them to sign a letter of support. The engineer's estimate is approximately $7,300,000 for the project. 1.46 would be the local cost for the match. We're proposing to split that with Odin 50/50. So about 7, $730,040 would be our commitment. Again, if you look at the timeline over here in years, right, right here, going in '22, what the local cost would be all the way down to 2026, when it would be constructed, if we're awarded. This will go through NDOT's process. It is a competitive process. We'll have to go and do a presentation for NDOT, beat against other projects in our district for the money. Whether we can get awarded or not, we don't know. We do think it bodes well because it would be kind of the capstone on the project. I entertain any questions you guys might have.
It needs to be done. A lean road like that is beyond me.
Awful.
And in the summertime. So that would be the hidden gem and then one of the, one of the reasons the town and us wanted to go north of the highway, we have this apartment complex over here and there's no way for people to get back and forth to the park in a safe manner. So this will put a sidewalk on the east side, the entire length, by a sick pedestrian passageway back and forth to the Odin Park, which is a great facility. I'm certain a lot of people you're probably seeing walking, that's where they're going. Will also involve the upgrading the railroad crossing. There's money in that estimate for, for railroad. Well, it's a $700,000 there.
Is Indiana Southern easier to work with than CSX?
Well, we don't know, but I would hope so.
I'm hoping they're a lot easier.
Yeah, it's, if any of you's been up through there in the summertime when the Little League games are going on, that road is as hot as any road in the county in that stretch.
Kids everywhere.
And it's way too narrow. And being a farmer, I cringe thinking about trying to drive a tractor with dual wheels and equipment behind it down that road and then meeting all that traffic.
We have a lot of that along with, obviously my tractor's a lot of the, major, major pump. Along with all those smaller, after shots.
Right.
Some of which probably want to be used in the county out here.
It is.
It is, it is.
Cars coming in from the south. Fair.
Does the Town of Odin anticipate being able to handle their force, now which as I understand would be around 750,000, right? You guys, you guys going to be able to?
Basic weight's broke down over those years. Pressure, no comfortable. Appreciate you, 64 even.
I was thinking more 37.
Rather than yesterday. Got some other projects we're working on with our water plant. No comfortable basic weight's broke down over the year.
And that'll be close to an election year and I think the town board members are going to put their salary up on this project.
Well, that's what you put up in that one's ass.
It certainly is needed. Lot of, of a morning, it's just unbelievable how many vehicles go up and down that road to trailers and tresses and just, it's a lot. So, I would make a motion that we support this process.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Dave, second by Matt. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, guys. Doug? Have you got the letter, Patty? Put it in the sign?
Put it in there. Counsel, also with this for the record, obviously supportive of the project is what you're being asked for today, but then from the auditor's office, we'll ask you to start formulating the funding sources and your thoughts on that. I know we have time, but as far as earmarked money and funds, you'll be thinking of that and get expenses and get that information to us as we plan for future.
Phil, what are you going to take to the meeting with NDOTs? I'm thinking along the buggy lines a few years ago, you got any bright ideas for that yet or?
We don't, we'll have to get Odin to help or something.
Maybe go into the meeting room and have him narrow it down so much farther, you know, and demonstrate how much narrow that space is from.
A boxed hallway.
We can pull a bunch of trucks up there.
Any other questions for me?
Okay.
Good. Appreciate it, Phil. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for your continued support.
Sportsman's Road looks pretty good.
Oh, thank you.
You do have a letter to sign?
Patty.
She has it? Okay.
Old stuff. Yo, that's my stuff there. Just for your information too, the information I presented to you guys on the screen, I did email you that earlier, so you have copies in that box.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, additional appropriations. First one's out of Edit Contract Services Agreement, $250,000, and that's the highway project that we've committed to help fund through Washington with Washington City. Patty, is that the second or third payment on that? Do you know off the top of your head?
Second.
Second, okay.
Third.
Okay.
There was four years of 250 each, so.
This is the second or the third?
I said third.
Went fast?
Yeah, it has gone fast.
I would move to approve this request.
Second, motion by Mike Sprinkle, second by Tony Dutton. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Riverboat, amount of $36,302.85 to RTC for phone system and sheriff's department. Information's in there, so. Talked about this last meeting, I think. Anything to add, Gary or?
No, I believe so.
That'll be an IP phone system that'll tie together with the new system over here and the.
It'll be a couple months.
Right. Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mike Myers, second by Matt. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Didn't mean to cut you off there, Gary, sorry.
All right, we'll move on. Okay, CARES Act expenditures, total of $1,075,414.
Yes, this is just with the CARES Act money and it being a reimbursable grant, State Board of Accounts tells us that it has to be appropriated by the council. So this is just a step in that process. You all know that we've submitted the total amount to them to get reimbursed. That was sent and confirmed that they have received of it, but we don't have the money back. back in county yet. Once we receive it, then we'll go through the process of notifying you and grant and we'll get paperwork and we'll set funding to rainy day.
Well, that's the plan with that money when it comes in, as we discussed before, to go into rainy day gives us more flexibility and more accountability as to where we're paying back out to.
And again, as a counsel from the auditor's office, working with the commissioners to develop that plan, we'll need to start being proactive on those plans.
Entertained a motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Mike Sprinkle.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all those in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have transfers, several of them, towards the end of the year, unlikely.
Like prosecutor screwed up his budget or something.
Yeah, he's.
Didn't we cut that for next year? Did you like to cut his budget? We gave him way too much money last year.
I agree with her things, this is my attention. Well, let me start by just saying, this has been the best meeting ever. I finally know I can fly to work after all these years and if not, the intersection there in Odin will be improved. This has made my heart glad in so many ways, so thank you for all that. But the idea here is you did overfund me on things like travel because we're not going anywhere. I mean, we can't do a lot of this stuff, but in an attempt to be a good steward and prepare for the future and what future looks like, I asked for some of these transfers to go into furniture, fixtures and equipment to kind of take advantage of some of the space over there that's been allocated to me now and improve our situation. I'm looking at a longer time horizon, I don't think this will probably happen again where I have this opportunity to make a few moves. A lot of times I wouldn't even come over and talk to you about, you know, just kind of fire this off like a lot of things, but though it's important enough, I'm trying to be empathetic and think about things from your perspective. If I were on the council, it would be important for me to know where all these dollars are going all the time. And so you should know, it's, it's kind of in-house improvements and it's creating more office space for us that we're gonna need to take advantage of. That was it. I mean, that was where we were going with it. Have questions, I'm happy to answer it, but it's, it's kind of allocating from areas where we didn't need the money, where the normal year we would have, to places where we could better use it to kind of foster this work from home environment that we're trying to get in front of here.
Okay, so we, we have four items here for the prosecutor. First one's from medical lab evidence to office machines for fifteen hundred dollars. And then from postage to office machines, two thousand dollars. And then from travel to furniture and fixtures, four thousand dollars. And from witness fees to furniture and fixtures of two thousand dollars.
But that represents on the furniture and fixtures is a wall that's gonna go out to create an office area that's been like a locally bid out. I think it's gonna be Joel Stoll that's just gonna put up a wall, about five thousand dollars in that range. And then with the door, so we're gonna be able to create quite a bit of office space with just that. And then the furniture, pardon me, the office machines, those are computers that we're trying to get allocated, people working from home because, as you know, this is just the start of the winter and want to have that set up. And the other thing is, our other laptops don't go in the trash, they're gonna get scrubbed and go to people who are working in probation or community corrections or some other places. So we're, we're kind of stepping ahead on that as well. And, and the other reason is, the goal is to not be here in front of you in twenty twenty-one asking for this stuff when I know you're gonna be really facing a real crunch.
Just curious on this witness fees, is that when you're trying a case and you have to rent a witness or?
Well, you do. You know, that's really funny, but you do have to pay experts and you do have to pay, and, you know, we've only tried one case in twenty twenty for obvious reasons, you know, and even that was an incredibly big lift in terms of getting people in and the judges don't want to be part of getting people sick. And I mean, we can't even pick a jury in this county without calling almost a hundred people because of different demographic issues that we have. Yeah, you have to pay witnesses, so we haven't had to do that as much this year.
Sounds like we could go to a part-time prosecutor. Check his timesheet, Dave.
You would be, you, I hope it seems that way, other than the number of, the, the number of people making bad decisions has not decreased and that our, our total caseload is almost the same, we're just having to approach it differently. So, that's, yeah, that's the rationale behind the moves, I thought it would be important for you to know that.
Having said that, I make a motion we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion by Dave Smith.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Dan, for your explanation. Any follow-up from our other county friends after last month?
Yeah, things are going great, they're super appreciative. One of them has the virus and she's at home, I was just texting her, Chris Jarrett is sick with it, but we, they are over the moon, excited about it and have really been out helping people. And they have prepared a letter to go out to all the other county councils to kind of let them know, hey, this is the new level of expectation, here's the number of people, you know, and, and fairness to Pike County, Dubois County, they have no idea that hundreds of people are being taken care of right under their nose, so that's on me, that's gonna happen. But the other thing that's happened is I'm, I'm dealing directly with the state to let them know that there's no excuse for them not to pick up this part of the bill, it's a state-funded program and you've been taking advantage of this county for too long. And I've not met a ton of resistance from it, but once again, people at the state level can yes you to death, like, oh, that sounds great, oh, that's not, you know, just to get you out of their face long enough. So, but yeah, the negotiation has not stopped, it will continue, I plan on delivering a result, but I just don't have an update other than appreciate.
We just don't want to get to the end and then new deal just not be done.
Yeah, well, exactly. We're playing a game of chicken with the state because I am, I am not, I, like I said earlier, I agree a hundred percent with your decision to say this is no longer a fit for us given everything else and that we shouldn't be fully funding this and, and that means that they need to step up. I think I can get them to do that, we'll see if I can deliver.
Or, or we'll stay in Davis County.
Yeah, well, I don't know if that's, I don't know if we can do that. I mean, I think we might have to give it all back to them. And see, that's a, that's what I'm talking about, that's the game of chicken unfortunately is, that it's not a negotiation if one party's not willing to walk away and.
So you're just have to use your charm to get them.
I don't know about that, I mean, we might all be in trouble, but I, I'm really gonna, I'm really on them and they understand where we're coming from. And I have not been met with, I have not been forced to find other solutions yet, but we appreciate the window of time to get us there.
The state should be Plan A, Plan B should be this, if A doesn't work, the county's picked up.
I agree.
Plan B.
Yeah, I a hundred percent agree and we're working on all that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. All right, next item, Circuit Court, have two transfers from office machines to relief court reporter, three thousand dollars, and from equipment repair to office supplies of a thousand dollars. Courts. Somebody's here. Don't move. Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Tony.
I'll second it.
Second by Joanne, all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, from the Treasurers Department, from tax statements to office machines, twenty-nine hundred dollars, registration fees to office supplies, eight hundred and fifty dollars. From equipment repaired to office supplies, five hundred dollars, extra clerical to office supplies, two hundred and fifty dollars. Lane. Add, yeah. Just, just that's what you need to do, right?
I'm just taking advantage of the money that we didn't get to spend going to seminars and things like that and moving some of it around to get the piece of equipment that I talked about, the money counter, I talked about that at budget hearings, so that's what we're trying to do.
I'll make the motion, we approve the request.
Okay, motion by Joanne.
Second.
Second by Tony, all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Coroner, from travel mileage and lodging to equipment, a thousand dollars. Again, probably something they're not spending money on travel like they were.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mike Sprinkle.
Second.
Second by Matt Meredith, all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Commissioners, from Contract Services and Agreements to Office Supplies, two thousand dollars.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion by Dave Smith, second by Mike Myers, all those in favor. Motion carries. Davis County Security Center, from Computer Software and Hardware to Household and Janitorial, twenty-five thousand dollars. Anything, Gary?
Well, I've had this. Bought mask and sanitizer and all that type of stuff with the situation over there.
With COVID nineteen money, take care of that?
That's how you want to put it back whenever we get it.
Dave, all of that changed on that CARES Act money? It all went to payroll, so that's again back to what we're talking about for future checks as far as procedure to how to disperse that money from rainy day.
The way I understand it is, I turned in my salary for that timeframe, my, my office salary, and that covered what they were going to give us anyway. So that's what they're using to bring the money down to here, then it goes into rainy day fund, then you folks decide how it's dispersed from there. I think it was one point two million to begin with and we've spent some of it originally how they had it designed and then as this whole pandemic thing has unfolded, rules change from day to day. So that's what they did to us back in September, I think, is when they come out with that.
Here I have a question, is computer and software and hardware, is that something, were those like fees that you had planned that we're just doing a shuffle here and we'll have to get those back because you have contracts we have to pay or why, how is there that much money in that account?
Uh, usually we use that money, we see what we have left at the end of the year and then we'll use that money to purchase new computer equipment here and there, whatever we need to replace, what was left. This year we, we.
Motion approved. Okay, we have a motion by Tony.
I'll second it.
Second by Joanne, all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks.
All right, Extension Office, Travel Mileage and Lodging to Office Equipment, two thousand dollars. And again, what he's being able to travel in that department, I'm sure.
Motion to approve.
And motion by Mike Sprinkle.
Second.
Second by Matt Meredith, all those in favor. Motion carries unanimously. And we have information here that's including your packet from Davis County Board of Aviation or Management Manager's Report.
Yeah, before we conclude, I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank Elaine Wellman for her years of service to the county and to the city. One of the rare people who's held elective office in both, in both years, so since Elaine is here, she's going out of office in the year, so I'd like to thank her for her service to the county and the city.
Excellent.
Yep, yep. And also.
I cannot imagine someone in their first year as president of the council having a more challenging year than you've had. I know my first year I was just scared to death and we had to do the levy thing. You've done a tremendous job this year, Ken, in your time in council, we have this for you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much and good luck to you.
Good job.
Now, I was gonna, first of all, a longstanding employee with the county, Alice Simmons, she's retiring also, first year, I think forty-five years, that's.
Amazing.
Pretty good run and she's did a great job and I've known Alice for years.
Yep.
Just couldn't meet a better person.
Yep.
She'll have more time to keep RC in line now, so.
Oh, yeah.
Good luck with that.
Yep, so anyway, but, and I'd like to thank everybody working with everybody over the last four years and it's bittersweet, I'm gonna miss it, but I've got plenty to do, so, and hopefully maybe I'll try to be back up here maybe in the future sometime or some other capacity or so, but it's been very rewarding, rewarding, enjoyable, working with great people in the county and got some challenges ahead of you as we've popped about the next year and a half, two years, hopefully, hopefully nothing, you know, gets too crazy on the COVID revenues and things, but my advice is, you know, just be vigilant, cautiously optimistic as we've said and, you know, we've got, we've undertook some big projects we've committed to not knowing this is coming forward, so that makes me a little anxious and going forward, but I, I think we can handle that, but hopefully can continue to progress in the county and move forward, so thanks for all your help and you'll be working for me now, right?
And I'm glad you're still continuing the hospital board, that'll be good.
Yep, I appreciate that and that's something I'm pretty passionate about and trying to make some progress there and move forward and do better things there as well, so appreciate that also. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the last time, hopefully unless we have some sort of emergency or special meeting in twenty twenty.
Had to bring that up, probably happen now.
Well, I should, I'd say never, but.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Dave, second by Mike Myers, all those in favor. Motion carries, we adjourn.